We are all Christians. If we are mixed, let's observe a minimum of silence. Thank you. For today's meeting, we have a singular purpose agenda discussion with China Union. And to begin, we'll start with introduction. We introduce ourselves so we can get the local and company. I'm a staff from my father.
If you want to do something to do here, I represent the people of this group of two sides of country. I am Jacob Chetwa Dibi II. I come from Grand District District number three and a member of the committee.
Okay, so my name is, uh, using GM colleague from one district five. Who chairing this committee?
Oh, my name is Pomosia Vakoto. Come from District number three, Bofa County and member of contracts monopoly.
And so my name is, I constantly be chill, come from District number five, Bofa County, members of this committee.
My name is.
Um, four eight uniformment, District number seven, Walmart, Sanai District.
Alright, um, small calling Boa, most relationation number three and I am in this meeting.
And I'm Priscilla, uh, Priscilla Abraham Kobo, our representative District number five.
My name is Klima Jure. I come from Maryland. But this joint committee here accept as chairman and chairman of investment and concession. Welcome. Introduce yourself.
So, so my name is Khachen. I'm the deputy manager for China Union.
Deputy what?
Deputy, deputy manager.
Deputy manager.
Yeah, of China Union. Because all CEO and CFO, they are in China. The Chinese New Year just passed.
You are the most senior person here. How well is your English? You understand also?
Yeah, 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 I understand.
Very well. Do you have authority to speak on behalf of your team is absent?
Uh, today, maybe next time, today I can't, I can't allow.
Okay, because you alone are.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, gentlemen of the press, this is an exclusive hearing from China Union based on a letter written by our colleague, um, for the formula, district, district.
District seven.
District number seven, Bofa County against China Union. And the committee, a joint committee of investment and commission or concession, contracts monopoly, labor, and I think one more. Lenses and minds also. So there are four committees, in fact, including our judiciary as a her. So this is a cross section of people from five committees. We are here to probe into the complaints written by honorable, uh, formulae and we sent you a letter for you to be here. In order to start, we would like you to present that letter. Let us read it and see if the contents are well understood by you. And then we'll go into the complaints, then you can address us. You have the copy of the letter. Bring your copy. Can you read English?
Yeah, yeah, I can read English.
Okay.
This is.
There's somebody for, okay, read.
This is a copy.
Yes, for you.
Okay. So dear general manager and president, uh, compliment and have the honor to write by directive of the House of the Joint Committee on Investment and Concession, mine, energy contractor, monopoly and labor to kindly request you afraid before it's on Monday, February nineteen, two thousand twenty-four at eleven o'clock AM in the first floor conference room, House One. The general manager, your innovation is based on the communication received from the honorable Fordy from a representative elector, District Seven, Bofa County to plenary requesting a addend with you in respect to China Union Liberia operation currently. Hence, in a part of the, for going the above name, joint committee is authorized to host your presence. Uh, involved about the including other important related issue, the China Union Liberia is hereby asked to come along with the below name document to enhance the exchange of the thought. Concession agreement, uh, acquisition chart, start list indicate the possession of the central, uh, general staffs. Proof of the completion of the renovation of the all existing road. Proof of the payment of the social security, remittances, surface rent, all scholarship. Proved the provision of the basic social service. Any other documents, uh, necessary as proved company, fulfillment of the concession agreement term. Thank you, gentlemen, as joint committee. Take the light in your full cooperation.
Thank you. You just passed. For the sake of our colleagues, yeah, I just want to read.
Oh, yeah.
Give it to, Priscilla, you want to help us?
No, I'm the secretary.
Okay, okay, give it to, oh, yeah, yeah. Please read it. Okay, so February fifteen twenty twenty-four, the general manager of China Union Liberia, Marubi, Liberia. Dear General Manager, I present compliments and have the honor to write by directive of the houses, of the House Joint Committee on Investment and Concession, mines and energy, contracts monopoly and labor to kindly request your appearance before eight on Monday, February nineteen twenty twenty-four at eleven AM in the first floor conference room, House Wing. Mister General Manager, your invitation is based on a communication received from honorable Fordy Formula, representative electoral district number seven, Bofa County, to plenary requesting an audience with you in respect to China Union Liberia operation currently. Hence, in accord of the foregoing, the above name joint committee is authorized to host your presence. In view of the above, including other cogent related issues, the China Union Liberia is hereby asked to come along with the below name documents to enhance the exchange of talks. Bullet one, concession agreement. Bullet two, organizational chart and start list indicating positions of senior and junior staffers or staffs. Bullet three, proof of completion of renovation of all existing roads. Bullet number four, proof of payment of social security remittances, surface renter, all scholarship, etc. Bullet five, proof of provision of basic social services. And bullet six, any other documents that are deemed necessary as proof of the company's fulfillment of the concession agreement terms. Thank you, General Manager, as the joint committee takes delight in your fullest cooperation. Sincerely, Madre, Sion, Chief Clerk. Thank you. Again, sir, that was, uh, that was the letter sent by you. You understand the contents of the letter?
Yesterday I received this letter, I, I, I have to collect the, all that information. Please give me the, your email address. I will send the soft copy.
Comment, I'm only asking your question. Do you understand the contents of the letter?
Yeah.
Understand, yeah. Okay. Um, have me a media that you understand the contents of the letter for us to commence this up hearing. You now therefore be placed honor of. Eastern. Call your name.
My name is Khachen.
Repeat after me. Put your name up. I. I.
I.
Call your name.
Yes.
A full name.
Uh, Khachen.
Do solemnly swear?
Yes, solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear?
Yes, swear.
Say, repeat after me. Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That is testimony I am about to give. That is testimony I am about to give. The testimony.
The testimony.
I'm about to give.
I'm about to give.
I'm about to give.
I'm about to give.
Be the truth.
Be the truth.
Not the money truth.
Not the money truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Case the bow. Thank you. Let me let you leave it. Khachen.
Yeah, yeah, Khachen.
Khachen, fine. That was the letter. You say you understand the letter. The letter say you should bring some documents.
I know.
You know that you're supposed to bring document. Please present the documents.
Uh, you know, yesterday I received the letter. The time is very limited. And also for CFO, CEO in China, I have to ask them to collect all the information. So, so is it possible for you give me the, uh, email address? Then, uh, I will send you soon, okay? I will send all the information to that email box too. Give you the soft copy.
Chairman. The manager say, you know, the content of the letter. Manager cannot come before the committee. The pressing for email from the committee has converged for the sole purpose of this hearing. An issue that raises concern by deputies of people in former District number seven, Bofa County that affect the livelihood of the people of Bofa against America. Mister President, the distinguished colleagues, the constitution provide that anything that impede the function of this body is contentious. The manager action is contentious. It be our function today because every one year, we should have scheduled different hearing for today. By this time.
Uh, we skip some hearing.
Or we have converged here because of a great issue. Because I beg testing.
According to testing.
Uh, according to deputies. And the tension is on him. He sitting here, he may be dressing cool, but he's under pressure. It's not private, we are people calling day to day to see results from this issue. So the manager cannot appear here with the issue that is on hand. And then he tell me that he want our email to hear. This is top playing phone. They admit the manager is to have all of the document. Mister Chairman, they admit you have a copy of the concession. They admit you have copy. The cost of general rule, it should be far information aga, at China Union Bofa. Not to be in China. It should be with him. The contract, who he gave the contract to do this rule?
Less of employee.
Yeah, less of employee. He should have them. He should be able to bring that copy. The boss cannot invite you. He know in China, when the CPBC and executive and red you, he knows the Communist Party red you. He knows the tension come with. They will honor their people when they are call. You can come before us here and saying that you have two point five billion investment. We cannot see that. You talk about two point five billion investment, you come here, you can't some organization chart. Is that hard to get organization? Because if you go in the office, the manager want the data to be displayed to show off. Is the organization chart to reflect? The pictures, the organic grain of the organization. Only to come and say, you can't read that the organization does. Or the chair, the action is contentious and you need be allowed to go here. Thank you.
Thank you. Our president, um, just to give addition to what my colleague have just said. This letter, you notice that it has telephone numbers. And if even we go by why you saying that you received this letter yesterday, why you couldn't call to say, give me your email, let me forward all this information to you? You have to come, let us leave all of Liberia people work. To come and sit here in that district, District number seven. People are there waiting on us, pressurizing this man every time. Receiving call, I will name you receive more than nine calls. To let us sit and then you tell us, we should give you email. Why you didn't call this number? I think, Mister Chairman, this is not about joking. We have to, there are other committee meetings we need to go to. If he cannot provide these informations requested for, let him place him behind bars. Let him be there. Then he communicate with whoever to bring the document on the tomorrow. But let him be behind bar or somewhere where he can hopefully bring his thing. We not hear the joke.
Yeah. Chair, thank you. Um, in addition to what my two colleagues have said, I hope you understand that you are honor both. And so when you say anything on the contrary, you be here liable. You, you, according to you, you understand the content of the letter. And the letter stated that you should come with couple of documents. You cannot say you understand it and then you do something on the contrary. You are here without document and you are asking us to send your, send email address. I think, you know, I think you're not being fair and you're not being, you know, whatever you are saying, you're not being truthful. We represent the Liberian people. When investors come to this country, it should be in the interest of the people. Their representative takes all the blow. You got people protesting one after the other, one after the other for all kinds of bad practices, labor practices. And you are here and saying something else. If you have brought the chart, we know exactly in accordance with the agreement that you sign. To invest in this country, where a Liberian place? Whether they are actually being taken care of, we need to see those documents to authenticate. But you cannot sit here and say, you just got the paper, you said, if you got it, you read it. You understood the content according to.
The fifty.
Telephone numbers.
Yeah, numbers are over there. You got contact numbers and then you are here. I think this, this, this committee, this joint committee should take a decision. To go forward because we cannot sit here without this argument. We can go forward on, on with the meeting in order to leave those things that we are doing to come and say this, so you know the importance to have all five committees on this one discussion. You know it's important, but we cannot sit here and just agree that whatever you say, you're not being truthful. So I think the joint committee should take a decision to go forward.
Um, inquiry, inquiry, not inquiry, comment.
Yeah.
Inquiry regarding. And, uh, inquiry, my inquiry to the, the manager of China Union. There is a copy that I will send to you on the fifteenth. If you say you received a communication, coming before the body, you come with a letter indicating on which you came here. So want to see the letter and see the time it was signed for, or we add the chief clerk office.
Just call the chief clerk.
To bring copy.
To send a return.
And when, when, and the return, when, when it's signed for.
So we just, um, wait for the chief clerk. I just made a call. So they can send us the copy. It's a nice little practice that we will send out communications because of such situations we ask the courier, the person who taking the letter to bring a counter sign, a copy with the name and time that the letter was delivered. Have you said that, Mister Manager, let me say. You got, you got other comments? Okay, let me get, uh, other comments.
All right, um. I don't reserve it and, uh. Manager of China Union, I don't know whether, uh, you are hiding deputy, as you said, deputy manager. Because, uh, deputy manager should be one who have all, all necessary documents. And I, as it relates to the labor issue, our people are out there protesting.
Mister Presiding.
This is very, very.
Inquiry, please. May we know why we have a deputy, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you see, you are.
Yeah, out of the country.
It's easy. So, uh, they did here, you have to go with fifteen. And, uh, according to your filing system, give me the issue of mask up. You meant of mask up. You know dearly, ain't give that. You could just lay him on your file, get the document out and come a long way. But I, honorable Presiding, I tend I told you from the initial stage. I know the people are insane, the Chinese. They always use way to get out. I figured another way of getting out. And I, I think we should not condone that because our people are out there protesting. For me, I suppose I honorable Voto, that this man been sitting behind bar on the, they taking this serious.
Thank you.
From China, I will take, uh, Samson.
Mister Presiding. Thank you very much. I think, uh, we would love to really know this man because he came impressing and said he's a deputy. But can he really identify himself to us, that document, in terms of his wife's name, his position, he work family and his ID card so that we can know him. What are we doing with the deputy?
Work permit.
Do you have ID card to prove that you are permit or you are deputy?
Work permit.
No, this is not laughing place. Don't laugh here. Listen, when you laugh, don't forget, please forget here. Not joking here. Don't forget to laugh. You laugh here, it means we are funny, okay?
Let us, let us take it easy. Do you have an ID card?
Each animal will laugh at me that is serious.
You got ID card? You have any identity on you? You didn't come with it, but you have one. Do you also have your work permit?
Yeah, I have.
Yeah, he didn't come with it. No problem. Where did he come from today? Where did he come from?
Come from?
Yeah.
Uh, 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 from the carwell.
Carwell, okay, so you are in Mobile. He did not come from.
He come from an office.
He did not come from Bofa.
Yeah.
You are stationed in the office.
Yeah, we have the branch office.
Yes, yes, understood.
So how you pass by immigration to come here?
So let's take, uh, Samson, it's a, it's a nice point. Uh, there is a good area note that when he's appearing, he will hide his ID and he is going, he is going to follow me.
Thank you, thank you, Presiding, uh, honorable Presiding, the distinguished colleagues. Uh, our witness, uh, has convinced us that he was going elsewhere. His presence here is not meant for this invitation. Because the invitation clearly stated the reason for which he's being invited and what ever that is expected of him. So Presiding, uh, looking at what is unfolding, I would think that, uh, to a larger extent, the manager is not even aware that there's an ongoing, uh, strike action, uh, across his, his, his control area, the competition. And that is in fact, it's sadly, it mean we have people who are here in the name of concession, but they are not even showing or saying to the Liberian people. With the, with the strike action that sparked off, it was based upon that, that a communication. It was based upon that, that a communication came from the people's representative who in fact is going through this pressure. And I would have thought that if the people's representative is following research and pressure, the manager or the management will have serious concern attached to what is ongoing in the Bofa's area. Uh, with his action, it's so sadly, it means that our committee need to step up its game because we have people who are running concession and they are not in the interest of our citizens. They are not in the interest of the country. I even do not know why we should be having this kind of a concession. Why should people be out there on strike and a manager is coming to answer question and he's not coming purposefully to display what is expected of him? Presiding, this manager need to further come back here and make sure that he convince this committee on what he think China Union should be seen as the concession here to be a property of Liberia. Thank you.
Yeah, let me add to that. Okay. Okay, not just, uh, I want to add to what honorable Samson just said. To attach all serious and important issue to this, he should not return here by himself. The entire management staff that run, the China Union should be present so that all questions can be answered. He doesn't have to go back to bring a second person to answer the question. So when he's coming back, the team need to be present. Not just here, no.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so. Yeah, honorable Presiding, fellow colleagues. The issue with China Union is that something that we should treat lightly. The first thing for me to understand that the head, the manager of China Union is not in country, even without what is going on with our citizens in that territory. It means that there is no level of seriousness, no concern of these workers. And moreover, the manager, a deputy manager is appearing as if he's not aware of nothing that is happening. He's even laughing. This is serious. I would have said we should ask him to bring his lawyer here, that he shouldn't speak without his lawyer. Because everything that is said here will be documented. Our people are suffering, our people are dying by the day. These concessioners, they are treating our people and the noise is too much in that area. And everybody will run to the representative. The representative have turned into water and soil manager, they have turned into public wealth manager, they have turned into everything you can think about. So we need to be clear that these people need to understand that people that work for them, they got family, they got livelihood and they deserve better. It's time that we stand and make those decisions. Plenary is the higher decision making body. If plenary came up and saw connect this letter to this committee, it should be honor because they are awaiting report from us. So I will submit. Very well taken. Look that when he's coming back, he will become a lawyer.
Lawyer, but speak truth.
Okay.
Not here, no.
I love what Presiding present this. These people that think in this country, they are investor or concession. Concessioners, they are not doing anything good. We have to be responsible for the beginning to us. And we continue to forgive them. Nothing will go to happen for them. We have similar problem in Japan. Even yesterday we were there. People protesting because what is in the memorandum of policy, they are not going to. So we need to get those people to know their responsibility to our people.
Very well taken. Yes, uh, honorable Presiding, honorable colleagues. This is a serious issue. The issue that concerns our people is something that we shouldn't take lightly. I know what happens to honorable Formula in this district now. For this young man to come with a hand swinging and, and say that he understood the letter, the content of the letter. And come before us, like he come in making, that he going to your house. I think it's a disgrace, disrespect to us. They find that he will be traveling. Has an alien on our Indian nationality, eyes, losses and all are there. When you are traveling has an alien, he was at all times travel your, your resident permit for him to see in this country, he left, come away, all the way here, was out. A resident permit, in my capacity as former immigrant, I will arrest him and have impressed, I've been impressing on him, so make all the documents. After he traveled from your house here, coming to us, we have requested for these documents and come and say he have nothing. And we say, well, he should go home today and come. We, we have to hold him in contempt, place him behind bars. And then next time, it was served as a deterrent. These are ways people come and, and, you know, and overlook us. Even the ministers do that to us. And we say, oh, let him go and come back. No. We have to tell them that this is not for play and we represent the people. This is how our people will think us seriously. That mean understand is that you can't go away for your house, out a resident permit. It's written in. It's waiting a permit that he was at all times. Display it when an immigration officer asks you, you must travel it every time. And he leaves his house without identity. And coming before us without something to tell us that he is indeed a deputy manager and we are talking with him. Then mention he behind by, you see our faces here.
The practice is for you to talk, you have to be very honest. You understand me?
Thank you, uh, honorable Chairman, fellow police. Uh, firstly, I have a question for you. How many years China Union has operated in Liberia?
Since two thousand twelve, two thou- two, two thousand fifteen. Uh, we operating in three year. Then since two thousand fifteen October, we um, uh, stopped the operation. Um, hopefully, we can restart the operation this year July.
So there's no operation on?
No, 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 just restart, do some infrastructure work. But never produce.
Chief, the question asked was, how many years have you operated in Liberia? Okay. Yeah, okay. Uh, thank you. It's okay. Um. Do you know that from the very onset, that you had access to your M D A? You could have uh revisited the M D A after every five years?
Yeah, we know.
Have you done that?
Because we stopped the operation.
Have you done that?
No.
Okay. So that's the first affair. Number two. Uh. We Liberans need investors, right? Like you, we're not investors that will come in our country. Take all of the money from China or other country. You pay your Starbucks from China, one thousand five hundred USD every month. Then you pay our Starbucks here, one, uh, one hundred and fifty. Or you say you are expatriated. I come in. That's one. Two, uh, you forget yourself that, uh, that you, you operate in Liberia. You need to do S Y Z, so you prefer to do it. All because you want to pay the devil advocacy for more Liberia. Knowing that this has to be done. You see what you did just now? You, you drove from Singapore, bitch, into Cambodia. You don't have a 15 document that represent you as the, 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 the assistant manager or deputy manager for the company. You know, Chairman? Uh, let me say this, you are, you are not, uh, we are not pressuring you, but what we see is what we go back. At this point, you have your right to communicate with your people. We assign the sign your after you, you go to street or jail, be there, you call your manager to come back, you wait there until we can start another, another process. Thank you.
You know, uh, Mister Presiding, Chairman. And, and Chairman of the Joint Committee, I say thank you. And distinguished colleagues. Uh, today is a very important day. The fight that over fifteen years, such thing has never happened in this country. To all these people who are consistently violated the concession contract. The first thing is that this concession was signed two thousand nine, January nineteen. As of now, the concession has spent fifteen years. That concession has never been revealed. The man before you has a communication, he said, well, everything happened here today. When I talk over, I communicated with this young man. And informed him that China Union has violated S Y Z. And I gave him a copy, which if you go home and please, you'll see your open carpet, I gave you a couple, everything we talking before you. He took that carpet, he wrote me back and asked for ten days. I said, we have waited for over fifteen years, ten day will not kill us. Waited for the fifteen year, he communicated to me. That they could not live up to what they have signed up to. It is from that communication that prompted the official complaint before Plan area. He's aware that the Chinese has failed to build a role, he's aware that all senior managerial positions are occupied by Chinese. Coming before us, not even coming with an ID card, with anything, no document. He, he's aware that the soft copy of this document is even online and he could print it. How many hour it take you to get your employee's ID? How many hour it take you to get NASCAR payment? How many hour it take you to, to even inform us that? Your organic grant, how many hours? But I would crush their respect in this country. I think if the president have said. This country will not do business as usual, we ourselves in this legislature need to tell the Liberian people that we are very serious. What I ask of this committee is that this is a gross disrespect, not just to the legislature or to the Liberian people. But a major investor in this country who are showing their respect in all co. He's aware, he has communicated, he's on record of sending me a soft copy of his communication through my personal number. And he's sitting here, he's aware, everything you send him, not to the communication, he's aware he have a copy of all the, the, the violations. I ask this committee, you know. I support the fact that we should hold this man content. And every legal means to ensure that this man can take this committee very seriously, I support it. I think our people has been, uh, lines has been put in serious jeopardy, no hospital, no good work, uh, working environment, no water. Nothing, no even P P E. No P P E. This man is a, this man in his management, managing time is just a gross disrespect to this country. And I think we need to do everything possible. If this committee can hold this man content, have fullness of full strength. As of all the strength of this committee, that they communicate and communicate with their lawyers who come before us. And, and ensure that this committee, this country can be seen as a country of law and respect of contracts. So I so submit as the committee chair, and I think we are acting in the.
Thank you. I'll listen to all of you, honorable ladies and gentlemen, um, Mister Witness. I will give you a short time before I come over the conclusions. Yeah, I saw you raising your hand. What do you want to say?
Yeah, you know, um, since China Union started operation two thousand twelve. We have already invested in this country more than six hundred million US dollar. But no.
Six hundred million?
Six hundred million. We built the, the Takata to Borma Road, uh, Borma to, uh, Bangkang to Hanoi.
Let me hold you there. This is why we wrote to you, then we listed X, Y, Z. All the notes you are talking about that you say you completed. It's on the letter that come up with documents, proof. I'm coming. We said come up with proof, he didn't bring them. Even the contract, he didn't bring it, we said bring your concession agreement, he didn't bring it. We read your concession agreement and after five years, thirty percent Liberians should be there. After ten years, seventy percent Liberians should be there. To authenticate all of these claims, we said, bring your staff, missing, bring your organic grant. We asked for several documents, he did not bring one. And I sue this communication, do you understand? A yes. Do you read English? Yes. You read the letter yourself? Yes. And you lie on a oath and I expect you. Our lawyer is here, he can defend us on that. And so. Most of the colleagues here are saying, we should hold you there. Once you come to the committee and lie before the committee. And two, you prevent the committee from doing its job, that is content. And holding you content, we can hold you here until our entire session expires. We are moving for now until we close for vaccine, we can keep you there. This is what they are saying. Well, seizing mercy with justice. And I want to appeal to my honorable ladies and gentlemen. That China Union is a partner to the government. The matter of Pedro will not take it easy. When he's coming back, you going to appear with your lawyer. Listen to me. You coming back here on Wednesday. You hear Wednesday? I don't know how they call it.
Wednesday, he say he understand English.
Yeah.
Although you leave the terminal, but I beg, right, at least give him a powerful to, to release it.
I'm coming, we will come to that. Let us see what we, what we surrounding. You coming with your lawyer, you coming with all those documents. Those documents should be here tomorrow latest by four P M. All of the documents that are there. Send them a day before you come for appearance.
Well, this office.
Yeah, we can bring it to your office. When you came, then you went to the chief clerk's office, I'm coming, yeah, tomorrow, yeah. These are documents that are there.
Bring it to the chief clerk's office. The system has a return address.
Yeah.
Please return all the documents to the return address.
Then if you are coming, come with your ID card, your work permit. You need to know, and your rest, and resident permit, all the contract.
For all your managers, their contract.
And you are not coming alone. If you coming, come with your H R. You know H R?
As a water's people, they cannot speak English.
You again.
All the Chinese are Chinese.
No good, no good, they can speak English. Sorry, sorry.
Honorable Presiding. Honorable Presiding, please do us justice. Honorable Presiding, please do us. Honorable Presiding.
Yeah, yeah.
Right now, there was an open confession. Thank you. The H R, my initial to guilt. The H R of China Union is against Chinese, not the Chinese speak English. Where at the concession state, what is it? Even resource director of manager should be a Liberian. So these are positions that will be occupied by Liberian. Why you know, no problem, why you know? Even their full concession agreement is not respected.
We want to work on our own.
Very well taken. So let's go back and, and complete this. And again, you are submitting. You are submitting all of these documents tomorrow by latest four P M. You are bringing twenty-five copies each, they said. Twenty-five, you know twenty-five?
I know.
Five, ten, twenty, twenty, twenty-five, twenty-five copies, you bring them here. Submit them to the chief clerk's office. Come with your lawyer, come with your resident permit, come with your H R. Whether he speaks English or not, he must be here. If you want an interpreter, do you want to bring an interpreter or you want us to provide you a? So you are interpreter, bring him. Who else do we want to come here?
Of the management team. Mister Presiding?
They say now, gentlemen, so we, we, we are moving forward. This is it. When they are coming subsequent time, all of the managers are not in country. We will ask for their train tickets to know whether they were here or not, as of this date. So this is how we move about it. He said they are not here. Unless you prove further that he's not telling the truth. And so we just accept whatever he says. So after the next meeting, when they come in country, we ask for their traveling documents to prove that. As of this date, you were not in country. So those that are in country, that are senior managers, come with at least three at most five people, including your lawyer.
Yeah, uh, honorable Presiding, I think I, the we were in. When, when we talk about the full, uh, basically, uh, those in law. I think I will admit that we have, uh, skill, uh, skill, uh, staff. Yeah.
What we talking about is skill staff?
Yeah, I come.
Yeah, yes.
When we go.
We talk to the workers union. Are you aware that there are some skirmishes going on? Or people are kicking at, uh, your company? There is some noise there.
I know, I know.
You are aware. When you say. When you say there is group operation going on, why are people there making noise? They, they asked for some. So the, the, the testing money of our friend here, you don't have F P E, it's true.
No, we have already solved the issue.
Okay, let us, let us complete with one more matter. These are things we are thinking. So let us, uh, have a way for, uh, uh, the retention business.
So my, my.
Let's say we keeping or we allowing.
We, we in content for the next four hours. The, the, the Saja are keeping for the next four hours. And within the next four hours, I know. If he's coming, he enter this document beyond, we will in convention. And when he come in, you come along with his lawyer.
We said that.
Okay, fine. Let's, let's do this.
Wait for what?
Okay.
Um, why I do not do with. Formula, they returns, all of these things, like you said, are all documented. They are what your tip, they are not there around here. We choosing play with the Liberian. This man should not be come back. If, and only if we be trying to avoid, he won't be come back. He should stay here for the number of hours he just spoke about. But he should set for his lawyer because he is not identified. And next time, you leave this man going. When he is going, everything happens, so hang him. They will come back to us. He, he sit here, after the four or five hours, you will be here. Let a lawyer come, we inter, we inter argue. And then when you are turning him over to the lawyer to go come back on Wednesday. Let these same people come and videotape me, you telling me over for him to go come back. That will save. Can we also ask? This is vast, let us talk about.
Let a lawyer come.
We will go, I, I'm, I'm appealing to you. So I'm back tomorrow to give the documents and on Wednesday, same time. When did we meet? Eleven o'clock, here in this room. Eleven o'clock. If you come here, you call any of us here, this gentleman, you got his number, right? So we are some pulling. Like I said, we will seizing mercy with justice. If it is for justice, we keep you here according to the law. Moreover, we committed Pedro here, you lie on a oath. So it's possible by law. When your lawyer comes, we will talk about, we want to talk about, uh, it in the absence of your lawyer. So that he can understand the meaning of the ground. So we will allow you today to go. Tomorrow, you present all of the documents. And you are coming on Wednesday with five you and four others, senior managers. Include say must be your H R. Your lawyer, women, who's six. You understand me? You are coming with your identification and your white permit.
Each of them.
Your H R, all the Chinese are becoming, they will come with their white permit.
And the resident.
And no excuse, because you don't have the white permit and you don't show up. That will be condemned to us again. If it is not there, let us stay come. You know the place you can face by permit. You have to face it. So are we clear on this? You understand me, understand? Everything. Anything you want to say?
I will, I will talk what you want, or what you request.
Okay, are we okay?
Yeah, that's one. You don't tie your fist on our colleague. Don't do that.
And.
Me?
The Liberian people. These are their representative. You have similar parliament in China, right? So when you are coming to meet the Liberian people and they ask you, bring this, that, this, that document, make sure you bring it. Work with us. We need concession days. We need you as a partner. The government is working with you. The government has a role to play. The government is ready with you. The government has a role to play. You have a role to play. And in play your role, you must do what is, uh, written as per the concession. That is why we are taking you on. Guys, obviously, thank you very much for this meeting, Honorable ladies and gentlemen. And Honorable, uh, gentleman, yeah?
Ken.
Ken, Ken Chen. Sorry, Ken Chen. You are here by discharge.